Welcome to this episode of Harvey County Talk. I'm your host Lance Gormly.
And I'm your co-host Sissy.
HC Talk is an HCD podcast. Our guest on the program today is Clint McBroom.
Hello.
Former Mayor Clint McBroom, now Commissioner. I mean, we've been having you out here on the program a couple of different times.
I think this is probably my third.
Yeah, always willing to come on.
Always.
So we appreciate that.
It's like I have a lot to say or something.
Yeah, or you're just one of those people that are willing to be transparent and open and come on a program when someone gives you opportunity to speak.
For sure.
And that's what makes you a great guy, really. I would just like to say, I'm kind of disappointed with the not running. I would have liked to see you run again and, and continue to serve our community well. I truly believe that you have. And I know that you've got different things going on and God's doing different things in your life and kind of calling you in a different direction. And I thought, well, this is the time in which we need to have Clint come out. We know you ain't filing, so you ain't doing this for political reasons.
Right, no, I appreciate that, but do me a favor, have me back after it ends.
Okay.
Then I can say more.
I might even have you out for some commentary.
There you go.
There we go.
Yeah.
I'll have a whole lot to say when this is all done.
Yeah, and I will just say this, we are planning a forum, which you will have an RSVP me, because you're going to be invited, so absolutely. But where we're going now, I suppose with this is just, I'm just kind of wanting to know, well, why did Clint first and foremost choose not to file again for Newton City Commission?
Yeah, um, I knew that was going to be one of the first questions, because that's been what everybody's asked.
Yeah.
If I reflect on three and a half years now of being on the commission, it'll be four years in December. I have loved, I think, every meeting we've had. I don't think there's been one that I've walked away from and said, this is the end, I can't do this anymore. But I've walked away from plenty of them saying, I'm not so sure that I'm cut out for this. I really value relationships and people. And it's unfortunate that regardless of the level of politics that you serve in, relationships get severed. And I think the most difficult thing for me in this process, and we can talk more about this now or later or whenever, but I think the most difficult thing for me is knowing some of the relationships that I had with people before I filed and before I was elected, I guess, and knowing where some of those relationships stand today. And they're not the same. And so for me, relationships matter, friendships matter. They're very important to me. I was just describing to a coworker just the other day, I said, that I've always been a person that if you're a friend of mine or an acquaintance of mine, that you're really a friend. And if you're a friend of mine, then you're a good friend. And if you're a good friend, then you're almost a best friend to me. So my point saying acquaintances can become best friends to me very easy. Just relationships matter. This is my first time meeting Sissy, but if I see you in public and I'm with someone else, I would say, hey, this is my friend, Sissy. I mean, I was just... And so relationships really matter to me. I think they're important and relationships get hindered serving in politics. So that's, that's probably the single reason why. Lots of other reasons. My wife also said, no, that's kind of a big one, but yeah. And I'm going back to school for a doctorates and I had a job change about nine months ago, 10 months ago. So just a lot. I think if, if my wife wouldn't have said, no, I would probably run again, but she was definitely not interested in me running again. So we can, we can blame her.
Yeah.
She's not here to defend herself.
The one that stands up to defend you can defend herself.
She can defend herself.
Yeah, I, it's interesting that you say that, because I'm processing what you're saying and of course, that's fresh on me, you know, because we really hadn't talked too much about it. But it's, it's very difficult.
Yeah.
When, you know, your heart is in standing up and serving your community and you're doing it because you value relationships. And then all of a sudden, it's like, whoa, this is starting to get pretty complex here.
Yeah, and there's, um, I think there's two types of decisions that we would often make on the commission. There are decisions that are, what I sometimes saw as being obviously the right decision, you know, there's a right and a wrong decision to make in this. And then there's other ones that are not so right or wrong, or so white or black. There is no gray area on those. And oftentimes, those decisions have the biggest impact on people around you. And so, you know, when I was working and serving here in the community full-time for my job, for my paid job, there was oftentimes, I thought, these decisions I make, and as a pastor too, right? And then even when I was teaching at the high school, these are decisions that I'm going to make that are going to affect the very people that attend my church. Those were hard decisions to make sometimes. And I've had to go through a process, and I don't want to get too far into pastoral profession and all of that, but I've had to go through my own understanding, my own process and say, kind of, what is my first love? You know, I've always had a desire for a long time to serve in politics. I think I can go back to probably when I was 20 years old. I think I had a desire then. The community we lived in previously, I had considered running and I thought, well, I'll do it next, next cycle, because we hadn't lived there that long, just a few years. And then we moved to, moved to Newton. And so we were here for a couple of years and I thought, okay, I'm going to do this. I'm going to get involved in politics. Totally did not know how the election would turn out, but realized so quickly that their, politics are so, so divided. And this is really supposed to be nonpartisan, right? It's not a Republican or Democrat thing. But decisions are usually made that involve what your political standing is on a lot of things, and especially when we deal so much with finances in the city. It's really easy to begin to understand where people lie. And even if people don't know, they'll automatically put you there. And so those relationships, they, they get harmed. And it's unfortunate, I hate it. I wish that wasn't the case with politics, but it's that way at any level. And so for me, the process, my understanding is that really, what, what was my first love? What was my first calling? And it was to serve the church and serve the church well. And so that was, that was another big part of it, but I think that is because of the relationships aspect.
Yeah, and, and not to go so abruptly into new things, but it, I mean, what, you, you mentioned that you're getting, you're, you're enrolled, accepted and you're going to earn a PhD in, in what?
In preaching and leadership in the church.
Very cool.
And so, yeah, that's through Asbury University in Kentucky. And so that's, that's it.
And so then your new job, obviously, you had mentioned a new job that you'd started, and that has to do with being a pastor as well as doing, you know, utilizing your other skills.
Yeah.
Right? I know, I know this, but for the audience, yeah, Clint, Clint kind of was led in a direction and then arrived at what I, I'm, I mean, I'm watching your life, Clint, and it's one of the reasons why I want you on the program, right?
So, man, yeah.
Walk people through it that don't know.
Okay, where do we begin?
We got time.
Yeah, no, so 18 years old, I, or 17 years old, I joined the army, 18 years old, having grown up in the church and parents that encouraged church attendance and growing in our faith as children. I witnessed my own parents have a faith growing up as a child. Joined the army at 17, right after September 11th happened. And went through training with that. When I was 18, or when I was in training, I really began to feel the call to ministry in my own life, to work in the church full-time. And problem was with a contract with the government and then being able to go to college and do those things. I had a chance to get out about three years into the army, and so I did. I took that chance so I could start college full-time and focus on ministry. So about 20, I think 28, 20 and a half or so, I started in Oklahoma City and then met my wife and we took our, we moved to Colorado for my first job in the church and I worked full-time. I was working full-time in a church here, but just in facilities and not any kind of pastoral role. But we moved full-time ministry to Colorado for the first job. After a year and a half, we moved back to Wichita. Wasn't a good fit for us, for our family, just in this community and in this church. And then the Newton position opened up. And being from Wichita, I didn't really know anything about Newton, but came here to serve temporarily, just as a fill-in for him and fell in love with the church and the community here. And through the process of them trying to find a pastor, I was hired full-time to stay on permanently. And we served there for 10 and a half years, loved every day of it. There wasn't a day that I look back on and say, man, I really don't like it. We, or I left my position there at the church for, they needed some new leadership there. 10 and a half years is a pretty significant time to provide to a church. Average tenure is about five years. Unfortunately, it's not long, but that's about average tenure. So we exceeded that double. By no means was that an indication that it was time to go, but COVID and pre-COVID, we were doing really well. COVID was hard on an older congregation and that was here. So they've made some decisions. I don't want to put all of their business out, but they're looking for a new pastor now. They're candidateing someone here pretty soon. I'm excited for what they're doing. That would be up to them if they ever wanted to share that. If you drive by, there's a sign out there that says, a new church is coming. And they're, they're working through the process of finding a pastor to come in to kind of start a new church there. And I'm excited for that, for them. And then I went to start at Central Community Church in Wichita, Kansas, which is where I grew up. Grew up in that church. It was where I worked in facilities 15 years ago, when I was going through some schooling and trying to understand exactly where my role in the church would be full-time. And I've gone back there, was hired to, to work with facilities for a while, just to help. And it's kind of evolved into two different things. There's sometimes I go and work and I actually do stuff. I did some drywalling this week at the church. And there's other days that I may sit in an office and do some planning for some project development stuff that we're doing. We're putting in a huge sports facility and some other interior and exterior improvements to the building. And then there may be days that I've done a funeral. And so kind of facilities primarily, but also sort of bounce around and do some other roles and other activities. I've enjoyed it. It's been nine months. It's given me a good opportunity to be able to go back to school and earn a doctorate, which again, is something I've always wanted to do. And so, but there was a period in time in there when COVID started and probably, well, it would have been August of this past year, I started at the church in September. So up until that point, I had worked, did some cabinetry work on my own, carpenter, and then also taught at the high school for a while. And so a variety of things over a couple of years, it's been difficult. It's been a lot to process myself to understand. But all of that has led to that I'm, I'm at a point where relationships matter and I'm ready to find a little bit of time in my own life that I'm not consistently busy. There was a time, if you consider church, because I was still working at the church when I was teaching at the high school, obviously just part-time, working at the high school, doing some carpentry stuff and serving with the city, that it wasn't uncommon that I was having 80, 85-hour work weeks. And it was, so now I'm only working about 50 and it's, I don't know what to do with myself. I have 30 hours to spare. So that's why I'm here right now with you.
It's because you have time to spare.
A year ago, I would have said, no, I can't make this.
I love it, I love it, I love it. Sissy and I were talking just a little bit about you and we've been talking in the past quite a bit about just leaders that we've had on here and the themes that they have in common. And it's that they spend a tremendous amount of time involved in sacrificing. And Sissy looks at it from the perspective of a mom, you know, and, and was just kind of commenting on how, you know, there is, there's, it just triggered what you had said about the 80 hours, is you spend an awful amount of time sacrificing, you know, time with your kids and time with your spouse and doing things that you'd like to do, you know? And then even then, there's the weight of relationships.
Right, well, and, and that was one of the questions I was going to pose to you is, how do you juggle everything? As a reference to your own life and how you're navigating, but also for those that might be listening that either aspire to run or have currently filed for the exact position that you occupy on the city commission, you know, what advice do you have for?
Well, yeah, I think I would have advice for those running is do it wholeheartedly. You know, don't, don't serve the city in a part-time capacity. I think that that, even though it's pretty low-level government, it's city, city, what I realized is that city politics or city decisions, we feel those effects more than we will ever feel a national law. For instance, something is, and I hate to bring up the topic, but something like water rates, you know, or water utilities. That's something that we pay every single month as citizens of Newton. Street resurfacing things, just simple stuff like that, right-of-way easements, all those things that we help maintain at the city level, we feel those effects every single day. So if you're going to run for a city position or a county or a state or a federal, whatever, no matter what position it is you're running, don't run if you're not going to serve completely.
Right.
The flip side of that is that understand the balance too as well. I feel like with, in regards to the city, I feel like I did well balancing that. There was times when I knew that I couldn't attend a meeting because of other commitments I had. I didn't want to give up an activity with one of my children for something for the city that I knew the other city commissioners would do just fine. That my input wasn't going to be extremely valuable to the conversation, that there was, so I knew the balance there. I didn't do so well with that in other areas of my life, like owning a business, but with the city, I think I did. And so I would just say that with people running, those candidates who are running and anybody that may run in the future is, don't run if you're not going to give it your all.
Right.
You know, you're making decisions that affect people every single day. And, and if you're going to run and not attend the meetings or not come prepared or not come and be ready to focus, if you've got so much other stuff going on in your life that you can't come, can't come and sit for 90 minutes or 120 minutes, then don't run. And that's something, that's a self-evaluation, that's self-reflection that somebody's going to have to do. I would say, you know, if people not running, but just the general public is just, you know, know what matters in balancing a schedule. And know when to say no, no is such a powerful word. And I did not do well for a couple of years. This could easily turn into a therapy session.
Hey, we're good. I'm listening, I'm listening.
I didn't do well with the word no for a couple of years, and that's how I ended up with 80 to 85 hours a week. And I, I remember, I remember the first time I was serving on a board, and, and I love the organization that's here in Newton. I think it's a great one. I would love one day again to serve back on that board if I could. But I remember when it was my turn was up for reelection onto the board and they asked if I would serve again. And I remember telling them, no. I remember the look of disappointment, because now they had to find somebody. But I remember going home and saying, man, I don't have to go to Saturday morning meetings anymore.
Yeah.
And it felt so good. So I was sitting in a, we were at lunch and one of my friends at the church in Newton, one of our other pastors there, I won't say his name. If he listens to this, he'll know who he is. But we were sitting there in a meeting and I was beginning to understand the power of no and what that meant for me as a person. And, and I had never been somebody that would say, no, I wanted to help other people. Again, relationships, right?
That's right.
If you ask me to do something and I had to tell you no, I would feel like our relationship could be hindered and I didn't like that. So I would say yes. It's unhealthy. I'm not saying it's the right thing to do. It's extremely unhealthy, but I like to do it. And we were sitting at lunch and we, it was on Mondays, we would do a little book club and we were reading through a book together. And we were talking about schedules and commitments and busyness. And I said, man, this is interesting today. I said, I just got a call this morning and I was asked to serve as a treasurer for another one of our Newton nonprofit organizations. And I love being wanted. And so when the call came, it was actually a text message. It was from a friend, so that was appropriate. But I remember thinking, I really don't want to tell them no, because I know they don't have anybody else. If they're asking me, I know they don't have anybody else. And it's not that I'm the worst one to ask, but it was that this person knew that I was trying to pull back from some things. And it was like, well, maybe Clint will say yes, because he's pulled back.
Yeah.
And we're still, we're sitting in this book group around a table, around table, and we're just talking. There's probably five or six of us. And I use that as an example. I said, man, I just got this call this morning, but I haven't responded. And this guy is a, he has a doctorate in counseling and he's a great friend of mine, mentor, and whether he knows it or not. But he says, why don't you call him back right now and tell him you can't do it? And I said, oh, that's funny, you know? He said, no, seriously, call him right now and tell him, no, I can't be the treasurer for your organization. And I said, I don't, I don't want to do that. And he goes, why? You just said you don't want to do it. I was like, you're joking, right? And he was like, no, I'm not. Get out your phone, call him right now and tell him no. So I did. I was so thankful that it went to voicemail. And if this person listens to, they're from, they'll know who it is. So, but I just, I left a message. But so just, you know, be committed to what you're going to do. And that was one of my problems is that I, I didn't, I got so busy that I couldn't be committed. I stayed committed to the city because I felt like, I think the election was 1,580-ish roughly voted for me. And I felt like there's over 1,500 people that believed I could represent them. I need to serve those 1,500 people well. So I stayed committed to that, but there was other things in my life that definitely were affected because of busyness. And so.
Right.
Yeah. Now, I got a question. When you, when you described some of the things that were affected by time, you know, let's say you only got so many hours in the day and, and you know that you're spending a good amount of time in the capacity of serving as a public official, as a city commissioner, mayor, right? 150th year.
Man, what are you here to be the mayor?
I mean, come on.
Yeah.
But were, were you finding that the times that you were having to sacrifice were things that were more important to you? Or you found necessarily, I don't know, I said, the value is there in the relationship, like, look at these things. This is, this is conducive to build relationships in positive way. And then this over here has proven to just make it more difficult to build positive relationships.
Yeah, I don't feel like my busyness or my over-commitment to things really affected relationships as much as it just affected me personally. My wife and I date every Friday night or Saturdays, but typically Friday nights. And so we would still date on Friday night. We would still go to dinner and do something. But there was oftentimes then at 10 o'clock at night, when we got home, I would return back to some type of work for a couple of hours. And whether it was reading through documents for the city or helping one of the nonprofits that I served on or preparing for Sunday morning church, or when I was teaching at the high school, maybe going back to the high school and finishing something that I needed done before Monday. Very task-oriented kind of person, or even some of my own projects that I had been hired to work on as a carpenter. And so there was, so I don't really feel like it was relationships as much that were affected as it was maybe my own just well-being, my own emotional and physical health. So, I mean, if I tell you I'll do it, I'll do it.
Yeah.
I may do it at 3 o'clock in the morning, but I'll do it.
Well, and then what, what kind of, what does that take from you to stay committed, right? You're, you're putting yourself out there time and time again, stretching your hours thin to be able to help. Yeah.
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 Which is the importance of saying no.
And see, and that goes back to the initial question, which is, what would you have to tell people that were running for office? And in that two, two-partness, as we come to the time in which these policy issues are going to start coming about, we know that happens. We've been around for enough election cycles to know that policy issues are going to start being discussed. We hear a lot about single-issue candidates. I don't want to pull you in that direction. But what is one of the, the most valuable nuggets that you can take away from your time as a commissioner to give when it comes to policy issues, not relationship, but policy issue?
Yeah. That's a good question. Can we return to it?
Yeah, yeah, or I can even rephrase, rephrase it a little bit. Like, for instance, you know, there was a couple of things that made the, the news, you know, this, this last year in reference to a service animal. When people can light fireworks and they can't light fireworks seems to be an issue. A mill raise that was, was a lot. Water rate increase. So, so there's been a lot of conversations surrounding these policy decisions that you were put into place to make that you really didn't know three years ago, these decisions are going to be having to be made post-COVID. You know, I mean, there's all these things and it seems like everybody has something they want to run on, including, you know, if you want to be low taxes or fiscal conservative or whatever it is. When, when the rubber meets the road and you're sitting there in that position and you're having to make these hard decisions.
Sure. Okay, I think I understand what you're saying. It's not your fault. It's my own inability to process it.
No, my way to ask it. It's my way to ask it.
I know when I ran and Lance, you and I ran in the same, four years ago, we were, we were running at the same time. And, and I can remember distinctly, one of the things that I wanted to run on specifically, and I used it, and I think I even said it in some of the forums that we were at. And I said, sometimes the city just needs to be told no. And the thought on that was, and I'm going to answer your question, but I'm using myself as an example for this. The thought on that was that I would witness, we would see, because you and I had both went to city commissions meetings ahead of time, which I want to say to the candidates running today, come and attend. I've only seen one of them there. One of them's been once and the other guy's been maybe twice. I don't even know who the other people are and I'm concerned for that. So as a current commissioner who's not running again, you're not running against me and I'm not running against you. I'm saying get involved now, because those people that are running, I, I don't know who they are. And that's, I'm concerned about that. I kept saying, and I even told probably you and some of the other people, that I'll run again if there's not enough good candidates. I, I may have not followed through on that. I'm concerned. I am. And I don't know the people. And to the candidates, this is an open invitation. I would love to talk to you and, and visit. And I'm happy to, I think I'm well-liked in this community. I'm happy to find somebody that I want to help support and get elected. But to say that, when I ran, I, I said, sometimes the city just needs told no. And, and I would see stuff like, well, we want to do this to the street, or we want to do this to this bridge, or we want to spend money here. And I would think, why do we have to do that right now? Why can't we just say, you know, just say no to those things? We don't have the money. We're borrowing for everything. We're still borrowing for a lot more than I would like, like us to. I'm, I don't want to say I'm the most fiscally conservative person, but because in my own life, I'm definitely not. I like to buy things and spend money on stuff. But I do think there's some things that we borrow for that I wish we wanted. And that's not a mystery if you've ever been involved in city commission meetings with me. But I do think that it's not as simple as just saying no. For instance, right now, we have, I believe it's on Southeast 4th Street near Kansas, 4th and Kansas, there's a big culvert system. It's a bridge essentially that has a big concrete structure underneath it. We know a lot of the backstory, because I've read through the documents that it's been inspected, it's crumbling, it's deteriorating. I don't know the price of the project. I don't remember what we set the bid at, but it's a lot. I mean, it's, it's enough that it's going to be bonded. We're going to borrow for it. I, I think three or four years ago, I would have said, why do we have to borrow money for this? Why do we have to fix it now? Why can't we save and why can't we fix later? Well, it's, it, we don't want to, it's so bad that we want a, want a fire truck sitting on top of it idling while it was fighting a fire. That's how bad this particular section of road is. And if it breaks, no one's probably going to get hurt, because it's not very deep, but it's going to cause a significant amount of damage to equipment, or it could hurt if it was a car driving over. And so we're fixing that. So some things are not as simple as just saying, oh no, we can't do that. So single candidate issues, I kind of felt like that was the single issue for me, is just we need to say no sometimes. So single candidate issues, whether it be a service animal, or whether it be a utility rate, or if it is buying new park equipment, because that's another one that we've chosen to defer on some, is buying some new park equipment. Somebody will probably think we're wrong for that and they're going to run, because we need all 13 of our parks to be with top, I think there's 13 or whatever it is, there's a lot. But all of them need to be top-notch equipment. It's not that simple. I wish it was. I would probably run again if it was, but it's not. So, so oftentimes, when one decision then affects this, and this decision then affects that. And, and there's some things that we, just simply the general public typically, and I was one of them, I still am to a certain degree, I think after four years, I'm finally understanding how all of this works, but there's still so much that if you're not sitting in the Thursday morning planning meeting that we have, if you're not sitting through all of the city commission and you're not there in person to hear it and ask questions, which the general public typically doesn't get the opportunity to do. There's so much to the decisions that make, that it's not as simple as saying, well, this is one single issue that we need to fix. So.
On, on that note, what you just described leads me to another question that I'd like to ask. You were a citizen, right? A pastor involved. You were elected, obviously. Now I've served full-term. And it seems as though many times, when you mentioned relationship public and what would be your main message leaving office to those in the community from the position of, I mean, the mayor for the 150th year anniversary, somebody who loves Newton, somebody who serves Newton, who wants to serve Newton? What kind of message would you have to tell them?
To the citizens?
About being as a, as a, the former mayor, you know, this is my time here and this is what I have to impart to you, citizenry about being in this position and in this capacity and what that entails.
Well, yeah, I'm a transplant to Newton. So none of my kids were born here. I wasn't born here. My wife wasn't born here. None of us have roots. They go deeper than the past six years, seven years. I was working for a couple of years here. Before we moved, I was driving back and forth from Wichita. Chose we liked Newton enough, we wanted to live here. Never planned to run when I came and to get involved in the politics. I was planning on serving my church and the community just in that capacity. But what I would say is this, is that there are, and I, man, But what I would say is this is that there are, um, and, and I, man, we could name names of people that hate this community, but they still choose to live here. And I, I would just ask why, why would you live somewhere you absolutely hate? Why, why would you want to live somewhere where everything, every decision that's made is wrong according to you? Every single decision. You know, there's, there's some people, there's a handful and I could probably count on, maybe if I had 12 fingers, I could count on two hands. I think there's about 12 of them and I can name them. It does not matter the decision that's made, it's wrong, no matter what. And I would just ask why. And, and I would secondly ask, why would you not get involved? To change that. If you believe that every decision that's made is wrong, why would you not get involved to try to make better decisions? Now, I don't think there's anything that drives me more bonkers than reading Facebook comments and it's Facebook. And my goodness, don't, here's another advice. Don't spend too much time on Facebook if you're going to run for office, but me and Commissioner Cry, one of my friends, we enjoy reading Facebook comments and talk to each other about some of those, but you know what? I, I don't understand. Why would you want to live somewhere that you absolutely hate? That I don't understand. But, but to say just as far to the rest of the public is be involved. Ask questions, try to understand why. I don't think any of the five commissioners we have now, myself included in there, I can't speak to the past and I can't speak to the future. But the five that we've had for the four years that I've been on, because Kathy, uh, Leroy and Rod were all reelected. So there's been five of us for four years now. I think all five of us would love to explain the reason why we make the decisions that we make. And I think all of us have deep seated values and why we make those decisions. I voted no to some things that everybody else voted yes to. Commissioner Senate, Rich Senate and Kathy various times and Rodney, all of us have voted no to things. And we voted yes when other people have voted no. And so I would say all of us can, we would love to take their time to explain, but you have to be willing to listen.
Yeah.
You know, I've walked away from conversations where people don't want to listen to my, they would ask why, hey, why did you do this? And I'd begin, they said, well, you're wrong because that, you know, and I go, I haven't even finished, you know? So I'm, I'll walk away. I, I don't want to argue, but, um, ask questions, be involved. Try to look beyond a single issue. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's exactly what I was wanting you to expound on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and in, and in this day and age, when you mentioned Facebook a couple of times, um, social media in general. I, you know, I think a lot of people get, um, a certain type of information funneled to them on a regular basis. And that's really all they're exposed to. And you know, it takes a lot of courage to engage, show up even virtually. I mean, my goodness, I, I, every time I get a live, I, I am like, even if it's five, the first five minutes, you know? And, and I try to get back to it. If I, okay, it's only seven 15. Okay. I can go back real quick, you know? Seven 30. Okay. I can go back real quick, you know? And try to catch as much as possible because it, it hardly ever works out for me to show up in person, but I, I will. I promise I will get there one day. And, but it, you know, even in the business of life, it still takes courage for people to engage. And the interesting thing about this election cycle is the, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, to take a side or, or get on my soapbox, but I find it fascinating that it wasn't until certain things happen that now there are people come and want to file and, and get engaged. And, and my concern is, as a citizen that is an observer and a civic minded person, what will they do after they take care of what they've tried to take care of and what the cause for them to file? What are they going to do with the rest of the term? That is what, when you say single issue, that's what, where my mind goes. Now, of course I'm an optimist, so you know, food for thought, but benefit of the doubt, whatever you want to say, but you know, I, you talked about juggling, you talked about all these things, you talked about worrying about the decisions that you're making and wanting to, to, um, be transparent about that. Well, I can tell you, since I've been watching the five of you, I feel like that, that there is transparency, there's accountability there. So I'm hoping that continues.
Yeah, I think we have. If there's one, one thing that all five candidates and some of those being reelected have done well, I think we've set the bar pretty high, all, all five. And you know, Leroy and Kathy have served the longest of the five of us. Rod second, and then Rich and I, the same amount of time, but I think the bar is set pretty high. Um, as far as what can be expected and how the commission can work together, disagree on items, but still move forward on others together as well. So I think that someone, I think it's going to be difficult for someone to get elected that isn't willing to, while they're each individual and they need to represent and advocate for their own issues that even as I have, um, I think it's going to be hard for someone to get elected that doesn't want to see Newton be successful. Um, I think that's going to come out pretty easy in the forums and I, I think that Newton, the citizenry of Newton, the majority of them have said, you know, we like the positivity that we find. It's okay to disagree. My goodness, can you imagine if everybody agreed on everything?
Right.
Um, it's good to disagree and to hear different sides. And I know that, um, you know, we've, we've disagreed even on this most recent, recent budget issue. And I, I'm a fan of raising the mills two and a half instead of borrowing from one fund to keep the mills from having to be raised too much, which is one and a half. And we disagree, but it's like at the end of this, we're going to come together and say, well, this is what we need. And so we're going to do it. We're going to make it work and we're all going to move forward together. And we have different avenues on how we get there, but we're going to get to the same point because we realize that's what is necessary right now. And that's what's important. So.
Well, and that's something, I mean, I will say from having watched over the course of this, uh, last few years that and I'll say for the most part, I, I'm not going to say a hundred percent, but that all the players involved have been able to just continue with a pro positive relationship with one another. I don't think there's anybody that's quit, right? Nobody said, I'm out of here. I quit. I'm not doing this anymore. Uh, nobody left and, and went out and, and tried to sabotage anybody, you know? And it's just interesting because you all are put in the position, granted, you have to put yourself out there. But then once elected, you have to make these tough decisions that other people don't have to make.
Right.
They don't. They're not the ones that, you know, I, I remember once again, we go to the service animal situation. Man, you wouldn't think that that's a tough issue and that is a very, very sensitive, tough topic for commissioners to have to walk through. And, um, leading into that, just what was, uh, I would imagine that might be, but maybe not, uh, what was a time during you, you being on the commission where you, you had to make a decision that you honestly go, thought going into it, this is not really this big of a deal. And then the people didn't see it that way. They saw it as a big deal. Has there been any big ones that stuck out? Besides, uh, the most recent one?
Well, there's been several that I thought would be a big deal and they weren't. So there's that side of it too. I can't remember specifics on those because they weren't a big deal. We let them go. I mean, we made a decision, we moved on. But there's two of them specifically that I can think of that were, um, I, I think some that you leave at the end of the day and you go, man, will this, how will this affect me now with friendships? Relationships I share with business things and the whatever, like, you know, how does this, how does this spill out outside of commission and affect your personal life? How does it affect my kids? And there's, there's two of them specifically that I can remember. One of them, most recently the, the pig. I'm thankful in that it's helped. I, I've built a relationship with part of that family and I, I feel like I, I mean, I want to talk to them and I don't know, that process right now is in the courts. It's gone to the court. So I maybe need to somewhat reserve my own comments, but I, I, what I will say, and I told the family this is that we had so many other issues at the same time that we're dealing with animals that came up that I think the pig situation got lumped into a rooster, goats and a variety of other animals that were discovered to be living in the city. And it was like, and I said it on the bench that night, so this was public comment. How do I say, yes, you can keep your pig, but I tell the next family, sorry, you can't keep your goats or you can't keep your rooster. And, and those were good. I mean, those were good. I believe that somebody can have a connection with a, or with a goat, just like I have a connection with my dog that's legal to have in the city. So, so that's a difficult one. Those are hard, um, to make and, and I don't know that I necessarily have a personal problem with a, a pig in the city, but I, I do know what our ordinance says. I don't think it's, I, I don't agree. And I, I told this to Chief Dunlevy jokingly. I said, I don't agree with our 20 mile an hour speed limit through downtown, but I can't drive my own speed, get a ticket and then expect them to change it later to so that I'm not responsible for it. I think 20 is too slow, but I, I have to drive 20 because that's the rule, whether I like it or not.
Yeah. And if you really want to get into it, you can advocate to do something. You know, like, uh, you can say, hey, I want the
I want to do a traffic count. I want to find out why we can't have a 30 mile an hour speed limit through downtown or whatever.
Yes.
So there's that one. And then the other one is, uh, it's going to take us back a few years, Lance, but I see, I was elected in 2019, it would have been. So it would have been March 10th of 2020. I know the date so well because it was also the same night as my anniversary.
Oh, nice.
And my wife and I came back early from our trip just to be at this meeting. And it was the meeting that we heard about the equality ordinance.
Oh, yeah, that got a lot of, there was a lot of people there for that one.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that was one that, um, was difficult, I think.
Yeah.
Because it, it does. I, I didn't agree then, and I, I still don't agree now with the city being in charge of equality type laws. I don't think that we're that level of government to do that. I didn't like the way that it was even being presented and I still want to support that. My position on that hasn't changed, but again, it is hard for people that, um, of a particular lifestyle or class or any of those determinations, right? Or any of those factors, not just in same sex relationships to those, but to, to look at those people and say, no, I'm not willing to do anything for it because I don't think we, we are the ones to do it. And so they're left in the same position they're in and, and I can, I don't know that I can relate, but I try to, right? And so I don't want to say that I can because I can't, but that was another, that was probably the most difficult meeting that we've had in, in that time.
Yeah, I forgot about that one. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to look into it.
That was the first YouTube, uh, first time I ever got it on YouTube.
So my wife and I had went to Colorado for a week beforehand with our kids. And I remember originally I had planned to not be at that meeting and we were going to come back on Wednesday from Colorado and our meeting was on a Tuesday night, of course. And, um, I was getting text messages and mind you, I'd only been on the commission for four months. And there was things being said about me online that weren't true, but it was, um, I mean, I was going to say, I think, but that's not, it's because I know, uh, white evangelical conservative pastor. And, um, I was automatically lumped into this group of people that hated everyone that was in same sex relationship. That's simply not the case. Um, I have some dear people in my life that are in same sex relationships and I love them just as much as I love the other people. And they're just as good as friends as other people are. But I don't think the city needs to be involved in equality laws. I don't believe that's our position. That's a state or a federal thing that needs to be done. So advocate there, use the energy that you're using here in the city and go there, right? That was my
We'll follow their lead.
Yeah, that was my message that night, but I remember we were seeing things online and man, there was stuff that was being said that was so untrue about me. And I thought, no, I'm going to go back because I'm not going to let, I'm not going to be the one that doesn't show up tonight and things be said about me. So we ended up coming back. So I remember that meeting just because we, we came back, uh, not significantly early, we didn't really miss anything on a vacation, but we came back a day early just to be, to be here for the meeting and be a part of that.
And it's kind of interesting that was years ago and, you know, people forget about that. I mean, at that moment, in that moment in time, that is the world. To many people, whatever that issue is, or however their lives being affected in that moment. And
Were you at that meeting?
I was. I, I actually had talked to, uh, to the city and wanted them to video record the meeting so they could be digitally projected, which hadn't been the case. Uh, and so they didn't. And I just, I mean, obviously government runs slow. So I did a face, a YouTube page, Newton, Kansas City Government. And then, then that, I think that was like the first one and it was
I think two weeks later, I think two weeks later, we were meeting, um, just commission and the rest of it was being broadcasted because of COVID.
Because of COVID. Yeah. And it turned around right away.
Our last in-person meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe the 24th would have been, but I, it was, that month was our last in-person meeting month. And so, um, yeah, I remember the details. I remember some of the things that were said to me that night and I, I was unfairly attacked, but, um, anyways, so yeah, we're talking about meetings that we remember and
Yeah. Wonderful times. Okay. So, so surely, um, in a non-negative way, uh, just because I know, you know, you're on your way out, right? So you're, there's a few more weeks, a few more meetings and then it's going to be passed over to somebody else.
I wish, maybe it was only weeks, but it's a few more months. It's December.
Few more meetings. Yeah. Oh, I suppose, yeah, we still have a little bit of time.
Yeah. Election November, they'll take the seat. Um, I think it's the first meeting in December. So I'll have to be there that night and then they'll take their seat and then I'll leave. So.
But with all that, what's, uh, what's something that you can leave the audience with? It's been the most memorable thing to you and a, and a good
Oh, yeah.
Positive.
Yeah, man.
Vain.
You know, I'm a, I like competition and I want to be first in everything I do. And so when Rich, um, and I, I've told Rich this, and so I'm, Rich, when you listen, um, this isn't meant to be a dig at you or anything, but when Rich beat me in the election and I was second and he was going to be mayor first, there was a side of me that was kind of like, you know, yeah, how did he beat me? He beat me, right? And it wasn't by a whole lot. It was less than a hundred votes. And I was like, recount, you know, no, um, I wasn't going to accept the election results, but, um, so I remember though, that night being so excited that I won. And then it was about six months, I realized, wait a minute. I took second place at the next election, but I get to be mayor, the 150th anniversary of Newton. Like how stinking lucky is that? You know, and all of a sudden I went like, Rich, you may have beat me in the election, but I get to be the mayor for the 150th anniversary.
Yeah.
You know, and so, um, man, just what, like, I can remember so many events. I, I've told my wife, um, there's things and, and I've interviewed a lot of families for funerals. I think any estimation probably, I've probably done over a hundred funerals in my career as a pastor and probably 70 of those are probably people that I didn't really know real well. And so I had to go and meet with family and I would ask, what are some things about this person? What are, what are things they always talked about? What are memorable events for them that they always told you about? And, uh, I, I know for a fact that my one year term as mayor during the 150th anniversary will be something that I talk about for the rest of my life. And so whether, um, somebody plans my funeral in a year from now or in 50 years from now. I'm certain that they'll say, there was one thing that Clint always liked to talk about and it was the year that he was the mayor of the 150th anniversary. We were in Honduras just a, a week or two, two weeks ago, and I was showing some pictures to some of the people that were there in Honduras. And I was just scrolling through and I was like, oh, you gotta look at these. This is a Ferris wheel on downtown, you know, and my son and I were the first ones to ride the Ferris wheel. I was like, you gotta check this out, you know? And so it's like, that, uh, that year will be it. But man, the event specifically from that year. So I remember when we started at the Meridian Center, we had the 150th kickoff. And we, and I wrote, or I did not write, um, so regardless of what anybody thinks, proclamations are not wrote by the mayor. They're simply read by the mayor. We have a great writing staff. Although I would take credit for some writing I did, but not all of it. We had a proclamation to make, uh, 2022, the year of partying for the city of Newton. And, and it was just so much fun to read it and then to go throughout the whole year and say, well, I'm the party mayor. And so, you know, um,
A good person, you know, you're, you're a good person to be the one, you know?
Yeah, but I remember that honestly, you know, we partied and it was so much fun to be there at the 150th kickoff. And then we had, um, we had the 150th birthday bash downtown. That was, uh, man, a highlight of, of my life, honestly. Uh, and I've done a lot of things and have been, have a lot of experiences and been honored in many different ways for being only 37 years old, but, um, that was probably, probably one of the biggest nights I think I've ever had in my life was being there for that and being the mayor. And not that it was, uh, like satisfaction or anything like that, but just walking through downtown and like just seeing so many people and they're like, hey, man. I mean, it was just so much fun, like never would have guessed in a million years that that would be part of this.
Well, there's
Or even part of my life, right? And so Newton is not, I, I mean, Newton is not a, Newton is not as small as some people think. I mean, Newton is, is known and, and we're well known because railroad tracks, all that, the trains. And it's like, man, I was the mayor during the 150th anniversary of Newton, Kansas. And people are like, what? You, you know, you were the mayor? And so, and then we had the golf tournament. And that was so much fun. Uh, there's at least one person in this room who was on another team that got beat by my golf, uh, team, but it was the city's 150th birthday. It was the city's hundred and fiftieth birthday, hundred and fiftieth birthday golf tournament. So I think the mayor should have won that one and he didn't. So.
Of course.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know how. It was the other people that I was golfing with. That's the reason why I was only there for the party. And then we did the, you know, we did the time capsule closing and kind of ended the year with that. And so those four events, I, I can remember details and specifics and I, I think I will for the rest of my life. And so. That was, those were big.
I was gonna say, I would have been the mayor of boredom. You, you failed it, man. If it, if it would have been this, if roles would have been reversed, these people would have been like, oh man, this guy is boring.
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm actually a pretty quiet and reserved person unless I'm filling a, a role, right? And so. I can walk out of here and, and go home and not talk to anybody and I'm fine with that. But it's like, when I'm the mayor, like, man, I'm going to make sure everybody has a good time at the hundred and fiftieth birthday party.
Yeah.
Well, we'll all remember that, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's a fun time in our lifetime. I mean, you get to be part of your community when they hit a hundred and fifty.
And I got to write a note for the time capsule. That was cool. So that'll be in there. Um, I don't even know when it's going to be open in 50 years or something, I think. And. I think 50, because I thought maybe there's a chance I might still be alive. I can come back and be like, I wrote that letter.
Yeah, yeah. Well.
You know?
Technology is getting better.
I don't know what Newton, Newton will be then, but, uh, you know, but I'll come back either way.
Bridges over the train tracks, maybe.
Yeah, well, that, that should be your outgoing proclamation.
Yeah.
I hereby say that I should, uh, we should have.
And I suppose, you know, in, in 50 years, we might have flying cars by then. So we just get to go over, right?
Yeah.
Sissy's note would have been, do we still have to wait on the train? Are you still waiting on the train?
To bring, yeah, to bring this conversation back a little bit, we talked about single, single candidate issues, right? And that's. Our single issue candidates. And that's one of them that a lot of people have talked about is what about the railroad tracks? And we've asked and we've tried to figure that out. It's like the whole quiet zone thing. Um, number one, most people don't know, and I'm sure you know, but a lot of people don't, is that the city of Newton can't touch the railroads. They're the only, uh, thing that can be in the city or in govern, in municipalities that. They have no control over. They are a federally regulated organization. And so we cannot force them to do anything. It's the federal government is the only people that can give them approval for that. So that's interesting. But number, the second thing is that some people would say, well, we need to get, you know, a bridge over. Well, number one, it's the cost is. Astronomical. Newton could never afford it. Um, and then secondly, it wipes out. Three quarters of downtown, half of downtown.
Yeah.
Right.
Both sides of the track. And so it's just, uh, so that's a, that's one that will never happen. We know that, right? So we, we can joke about it, but. Um, but it's like those single candidate issues, like the, they're much more complex than maybe what we think. And so, yeah.
So what he just said, Sissy was, when you run for Newton City Commission, you need to run on the platform that you will build a bridge over the railroad tracks. That's what I heard.
No, I'm going to invent, I'm, I'm going to invent things to do while you're waiting.
Okay.
You know, because, you know, everybody, you know, if you, I think there's, I think there's a law in this state. I don't know if it's a county or city ordinance that you have. I don't think you can have your phone in your hand if your car is not in park.
So park it.
Idling, I think, but I don't think, I don't, I don't know. Okay. I'm going to have to look into that.
You're just not trying to get anybody to do anything illegal, but you could put it in park.
Well, you know, you know, like, like have, uh, you know, I don't know, like bust out the nineteen eighties boom box and a piece of cardboard and have somebody start breakdancing and have everybody. Get out of their car.
Is that illegal for a mayor, McBroom? What does the city ordinance say about that?
I don't care what it says. If somebody breakdanced while they're waiting on a train, they can do it.
Oh, I am all for that.
TikTok views.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully people participate, not try to videotape it, you know?
I have never said, you can say the commissioner said it was okay, but if you're breakdancing, waiting on a train and the police come, you can tell them commissioner, commissioner McBroom said it was okay.
It doesn't make it legal.
Doesn't make it legal.
But make sure to take your boombox and your cardboard with you. Don't litter.
Yeah. Well, you know, you've got to be prepared in any type of an event and we kind of know the. Probably a pretty good chance of getting stuck by a train. So.
Yeah.
Fun fact, I always wanted to learn how to breakdance when I was a kid.
Interesting.
It's a true story.
I never learned how. So, nor did I have the desire necessarily.
I mean, I tried, but it was not a pretty sight.
It was the breaking was the key word, maybe.
There was no dancing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. I thought I was cool, but you know, I don't know.
All right. Well, we're coming to the end of the program. You've been on here before. You know, as always, that I give the guest the, the final word that you. Can speak directly to the hearts and minds of anybody listening. Clint, what do you got to say?
Man, I, uh, I said this a lot when, on my time on commission is that, um, with my occupation. We could really live anywhere that we want to. Um, we have missionaries in our church that serve all over the world. I think there's ninety-two countries and we have, um, I'm part of the Church of God of Anderson. We have congregations in eighty-nine of the ninety-two countries in the world. And so I could literally go anywhere and serve to a certain degree, right? But I could look for an open position. I could go, I mean, I could probably find one in Germany today if I wanted to and move there. And, um, of everywhere that I could choose to live, you know, we chose Newton. And we, we came to work here just on a part-time basis, was not planning on living here, had no desire to live here. Uh, we had a great house. We had a great community we lived in before this and we just loved the, the community so much. Hasn't been without its challenges. But we've loved the community so much that we chose to live here and, and for the time being, we're planning on staying. A lot of people have asked. Is your family moving? Um, we don't know yet. Uh, we're here for the time being. I, I heard there might be some bets going around town on how soon the McBrooms will move, but. I just want to know who's going to give the biggest payoff. And so that's when we'll move, but, um, we're, uh, yeah, we're, we're here for the time being. We're going to say we love Newton. And Newton's a very special place to us, uh, to my wife and I both. And I, I would just say, um, you know, Newton. It is not without its flaws. I could, I could write a list, a long list of things that we don't do well here in this community. But what we do do well outweighs everything that we don't do well. And so find the things that are good about this community and embrace them, champion them, move forward with them. I think about right now, all, you know, our downtown. There's some flaws. I wish it was open later in the evening times. But man, if you go down there on a Saturday morning, what a fabulous place just to walk and grab a cup of coffee at Norm's or run over to Back Alley or get some donuts or go to Faith and Life Bookstore. So many good places to stop and, and just enjoy the community. So my closing thought is this, is that. Newton is much better than any of us give it credit for. And it's not because of one person. It's because of the community that lives here.
That's it. That's one to think about.
Yeah.
Well, there you have it folks. And thanks for listening to this episode of Harvey County Talk. I was your host Lance Gormley.
And I was your co-host, Sissy.
You have a good week, everybody.